And the agenda is roll call. Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Burks.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
Okay, and I am present. Second item is prayer and pledge, and if you'll please stand, and Commissioner Lucas will lead us in a prayer.
Your Lord, we just want to thank you for this opportunity we have tonight to come to this place. We thank you for this city that we all love so much, God. We ask that you be with us during this time of rain, keep people safe as they're traveling, keep our students safe as they go to school, and just everyone within our community. God, we ask that you be with this board tonight as we make decisions, the best decisions that we can for this city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Third item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Do we have any additions? Okay, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No public hearing tonight. Citizens comments?
Mayor, we have one tonight from Ms. Jane Tucker.
Okay, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you for the opportunity to come back. Ours is in regard to the Habitat for Humanity that is going to be next to our property. And when I was here before, I was pretty upset. I just felt like it was going to devalue our home. Am I tickled to death about it now? No, you know, naturally I don't want it there. I just feel like it'll take the value down. However, in all fairness, Mr. Daniel Reynolds with Habitat for Humanity came to see us and sat down and spent quite a bit of time with us with his plans and the city ordinances about sidewalks and trees. And he just spent a lot of time clearing up a lot of things. And sometimes when you don't want something, you realize that it's probably going to happen anyway. And I'm sure it's a good thing, and I just really appreciated Mr. Reynolds doing that. He also invited us to come and meet with him and the surveyor. And they had all of the maps lined out and showed us everything, what they wanted to do, what they were proposing to do. And there was an issue, I didn't know my property had an easement on it, 50 feet, that would make a road coming up by the side of our house, and we've got a driveway coming down this side. And they were willing to work with us. They actually came up with this idea that they think they can have the road enter this subdivision for Habitat without using that 50 feet of easement. So the surveyor was going to come out and put the pegs down to stake that off so we could take a look at it. But he said it might be several weeks because he's really busy. So in saying all that, I know it's not all about me, and I know that I trust him. I really trust Mr. Reynolds. I'm trusting him to stay in this position and never leave this city. And I can hold him accountable to the things that he said. And I know I can't do that, I'm just teasing. But they really made an extra effort to put us at ease and show us how I can see it as a woman. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six, awards and recognition. Okay. Item seven, public announcements. And then it looked like we had something for the comprehensive plan. Was that you?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. As you know, we recently advertised for RFQs for submissions for the city's comprehensive plan. We have one presentation to be made to you tonight. We discussed this at the last work session. A firm out of Franklin, Common Ground, has submitted a proposal. We've invited them to make a presentation to you tonight. I know Keith Covington from Common Ground is here. So it would be a pleasure, please the council, we'd like to take just a moment and have them make their presentation. And I believe they have an electronic presentation for you as well. So at this point, I'd like to invite Mr. Covington to step up.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Right here. It's going to work. Oh. Mayor, Commission, also thanks to Scott. It's awesome to be here tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to come talk to you about your comprehensive city plan project that you're getting ready to embark upon. I'm Keith Covington with Common Ground Urban Design and Planning, based out of Franklin, Tennessee. With me tonight is Preston Elliott with KCI Technologies out of Nashville, and Randall Gross with Randall Gross Development Economics. And we're really excited about this opportunity. Scott asked us to come and talk to you all about, little bit, introduce ourselves, tell you a little bit more about us, and talk to you a little bit about comprehensive planning in general and our approach to that. And we're going to do this in a fairly quickly manner so that you all have any questions, you're welcome to ask us. And in the, to try to keep things tight on time and everything like that, I'm just going to run through this presentation, but all three of us will be here for this. So we're going to jump right into it. So let me start out by telling you a little bit more about Common Ground. Like I said, we're based right over in Franklin. My business partner and I have over 30 years of combined experience in urban design and planning. Prior to starting Common Ground, I was the manager of the Metro Nashville Planning Department's Design Studio. And we sort of started to rethink the way that planning was done in Nashville. We worked across the nation, and particularly in the southeast, but we have a great deal of statewide experience as well. We're currently working in Lebanon, Tennessee, Lewisburg. We recently completed projects in Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Chattanooga. As far as comprehensive planning goes, we recently were part of multidisciplinary teams that did projects in Starkville, Mississippi, Oxford, Mississippi, which also incidentally included Randall Gross on those two projects. We also recently completed a comprehensive plan for Pike Road, Alabama, which is a small community just outside of Montgomery. Another thing I wanted to point out about Common Ground is that we have a good deal of private sector experience too. So, you know, having worked in the public sector, but also worked with municipalities and worked with property owners and private developers, we kind of understand both sides of the table, and we bring that kind of experience to every project. So our role in this project is, you know, obviously project management, but also leading the planning effort, the public engagement effort, any design issues that might arise, and then of course GIS and mapping. KCI Technologies, they have over 30 years of sustainable transportation planning and design experience. They have a great deal of experience in the region. They recently completed the Williamson County Comprehensive Traffic Strategy. They also have done major thoroughfare plans for Smyrna and Brentwood, among other projects. And the thing that's great about KCI, they were formerly RPM Transportation Consultants, have been around for a long time. They take a complete streets focus to their projects. They don't just think about moving cars. They think about mobility and the whole spectrum of moving cars, as well as people, bicyclists, transit, if that's an issue. And it brings a different kind of approach to their projects. So they would be our transportation planning lead. Randall Gross, also based in Nashville, is an economic and strategic planning and development consultant. Randy has over 30 years of experience on 600-plus projects all over the world. And while he has a great breadth of experience, he has a particular expertise in comprehensive planning. And not just market analysis, not just determining, you know, forecasting land use and projections, but what are the physical impacts of that? Also, he has done economic development, strategic planning for communities, housing and community revitalization, and strategic planning. So Randy brings all of that to the team, and we can tailor all of our experience to this particular project. So real briefly, just a real quick plug for comprehensive planning in the state of Tennessee. I know you guys have a 2020 plan. We haven't had a chance to really review that in detail yet, but we understand it's a bit outdated and that you're interested in taking another look at that. And so Scott wanted us to just talk a little bit about, you know, what exactly is a comprehensive plan and how it's used. So I don't want to insult your intelligence. You may already know all of these things, but just to give you an idea of where we come from, you know, obviously, we believe a comprehensive plan is a document that's intended to guide the future actions in terms of management and growth in a community. But it's important to note that it's policy, it's not law. You know, your zoning is law. A comprehensive plan is a guide to help you make decisions on a myriad of issues. Now, the state of Tennessee, you may or may not know this, but they provide pretty limited guidance on comprehensive planning. Unlike many states around the country, and especially right around us, I mean, there are a lot of states around us that say, here's exactly what your comprehensive plan has to include, how often you have to update it, and so forth. Tennessee is a little bit more limited in that manner. But it should be noted, just like you all have embarked on this in the past, lots of communities in Tennessee do some sort of regional planning. And there's just a few examples of some of the communities right around here that have plans. You know, some are more dated than others, and some are brand new. But it really does happen. And if you don't have a comprehensive plan, you really risk having kind of a haphazard development pattern that isn't really served well by the community. What might be entailed in a comprehensive plan? Well, again, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, there's a lot of flexibility for Tennessee communities. But typical elements that are in a comprehensive plan, obviously, existing conditions assessment is a big part of that. That's where you start. You have a community vision, which is the foundation of the plan, goals and objectives that come out of that. And then as far as some of the physical planning elements, you have future land use plans. And lately, comprehensive planning has expanded to actually encompass development character. People are interested in, you know, creating a sense of place. How do we make a place? How do we improve our place in our town? And so development character, not just broad brushes of land use, are often considered. And of course, transportation and mobility, parks and open space, community facilities, all of those things are dependent upon those land use and form patterns. And so a good comprehensive plan doesn't think of those things in silos, but actually interconnects and thinks of those together. Comprehensive plans often include economic development recommendations. Very, very important to have implementation strategies as part of your comprehensive plan. And, you know, there are other elements that some communities feel like are necessary in their plan, and those are listed there. So it's really about tailoring this to the needs of your community, and that's something that we would do as part of this. So next, I want to talk a little bit about our approach to this. And we kind of jokingly refer to this as how the sausage gets made. This is a term or a phrase that's used by a colleague of ours in Texas about how to show you how the steps are that we take in any sort of planning process. And I should point out that we have four basic steps, but the individual tasks, we tailor to the community that, as they need it. And so that's something to keep in mind as we go about this. So the first step is understanding the problem or understanding the community. We will initiate the project. We do a lot of community reconnaissance, that's gathering data, that's reviewing that data. We do a baseline assessment of all of the conditions that might affect planning the future of your community. At the same time, Randy would typically do an economic development assessment to create a baseline of your economic conditions. And then if necessary, or you deem it necessary, or feel like it should be something we look at, taking a deeper dive into certain specific uses. I believe your RFQ mentioned retail as something that you're interested in. That's certainly a possibility, but it's good to get that overall snapshot first. And you take all that information and you put it into an existing conditions report. And the timeframe on that particular step is approximately three months. Now, the next step in our process is what we call explore. And this is probably the most important or most crucial step in the process in terms of engaging the community. And I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about some of the engagement in a minute. But, you know, there are two major things there. One is the kickoff envisioning event, and then there's what we call a planning charrette or workshop where we talk about the fiscal issues. And that is usually a two-month process after that first step. After we have engaged the community and explored different ideas with them, then we have what we call the refine phase, and that's where we roll up our sleeves and actually produce the draft plan. And then we come back and we present that draft plan to the community for input. It's certainly not done at that point, and the timeframe from that process is approximately three months. And then the final step in our approach to any plan is, we'll take all that information. We got all that feedback. We will revise the plan and submit a final draft plan for approval. The timeframe on that, we say one month there. It could be more, depending on how much a community wants to spend reviewing. I understand in the RFQ, you were hoping to have the plan complete by sometime in December, I think December 20th or so. I think that's a reasonable schedule in terms of producing the plan. Your actual adoption and approval might come after that. But it is important to give yourself the right kind of time to make sure you get all your things right that you have in the plan. Now, let's talk a little bit about outreach and engagement, because this is a crucial, critical part of the process. You know, in the past, you know, 20, 30 years ago, and maybe even longer than that, planners would like crunch a lot of data, they'd look at maps, and they'd go into a conference room and they'd just produce a plan. They'd come out and they'd say, here, community, here's your plan. And over the past couple of decades, that's really changed. Community outreach and engagement is a huge part of any planning process, and it's really the foundation of our work. So I want to talk to you a little bit about how we approach it. And it's important to talk about this because you want a citizen-driven plan. You want to build consensus throughout the process. You want to create ownership. And by doing that, you know, citizens see their fingerprints on the plan. And there are essentially three steps that we propose in this. Is number one, invite and encourage, make it easy to participate, engage the community at various levels, and then use and report that information so that it's a transparent process. There are a ton of outreach tools out there. It really depends on your budget for this. But, you know, first and foremost, branding the project, creating some sort of identity that creates a buzz around your new plan, we think is an important thing. And then using project website, whether it's your website or a website that we set up, social media, direct mail, news releases, partnerships with community organizations where they spread the word and get it out there. Any number of tools might be at your disposal to get the word out and get people to the events that you have scheduled. I'll even say that, you know, sometimes being so close is great. You know, if there's a community event, let's say in the spring or summer, and we can come out and set up a table and say, hey, we're doing a comprehensive plan for your community. You know, sign up so that you're in the loop, or give us your thoughts and feedback. We can build that into this process because it just increases the outreach. And when we talk about engaging folks, it's really, there's engagement of large groups. That's the sort of public meetings that we always think of. And then there's engaging small groups. And there are three main points in the process where we want to engage large groups of the community. One is this kickoff envisioning event. This is that part of that phase two that I was telling you about, the explore phase. Obviously, at this event, we're going to introduce the project. You know, what's the purpose of this plan? What's the process? What's the schedule? But this also gives us an opportunity to develop, to start to craft that vision, to develop a consensus on what the future, what future the residents of Fairview want. So we can do that through a series of, you know, visioning questions or breakout groups. Then the onsite planning charrette that I mentioned is something rather new for comprehensive plans. It hasn't been used a lot in the past, but we've used it successfully in recent projects where we actually deal with some of the physical planning issues by coming and doing a workshop for three to five days in the City of Fairview. So, you know, something, how that might look is having a hands-on planning session to kick things off where the community's sitting around maps, and we ask them questions about that. Then we take that information, distill it down, and do some initial brainstorming with the team. Now, if you don't have a steering committee established, we highly recommend that you do. Sometimes it's the planning commission, but sometimes it's a completely independent group. But this is a great opportunity in this workshop to say, hey, steering committee, here's what we heard the other night. Did you all hear the same thing? This is where we're going. Give us some feedback on that. Then we can go back and refine that, all in this, you know, three- to five-day period, and then come and do a work in progress presentation. And it's truly work in progress. We're not done with the plan at the end of that. We're just getting started, really. But this gives us another opportunity to get that feedback. Now, the other opportunity for large group feedback that we use is, actually, oh, let me talk about the deliverable real quick. So you see what comes out of that. You get what we call a framework plan. So it takes all of those elements, the land use development, future land use development patterns, mobility, community facilities, parks and open space, all those physical planning elements, and you start to look at those things together. And you see that in diagrammatic form, and then you start to see how, we don't think about them in silos, but how they work together. We can also do small area plans too, if necessary. We've done that in some other communities. Again, it's something that we can tailor to the particular place. And where I was about to go before I was talking about those deliverables is after we develop that draft plan, we have an open house event where it's rather informal, people can come and go, there are different elements. People are there to explain certain elements of the plan, and they can engage and have conversation about that. And then that feedback, we take back and put into the final draft of the plan. Now, engaging small groups, this is really about targeted engagement. So, you know, getting feedback comes in so many different ways. Steering committee is one of those examples. They have a specific purpose in guiding this plan process. It could be the planning commission or the board of commissioners, city departments, that's a huge part of it. These are groups where there are specific interests that we can engage in on a, in a more intimate setting. We may have a whole day where we have stakeholder meetings with, let's say it's real estate professionals and design professionals in one meeting, religious institutions in another meeting, neighborhood associations in another meeting, and we can talk about the issues that are important to them. And then, of course, outside of that, in Randy's work, he does a whole other level of business and economic-related engagement with small groups that takes on any number of forms, as you see listed there. So it's a great way of really looking at both the bigger picture, the bigger settings, as well as the smaller settings. So I'll just close here. Again, thank you for the time to present. I don't want to take too much of your time tonight. But I just want to close with why we think we should work together and why we think we're a great fit for the City of Fairview. Number one, we have a good deal of public sector planning and implementation experience. We are, you know, have a specialization in public input, but it's really kind of the foundation of our work. We really like to engage the community in the process. While we have a lot of experience, we are not so, we're not curmudgeons. We have, we're open to new ideas and new thinking on planning that's well-grounded. As a designer, I always have an eye toward design, and so does the rest of my firm, because design is becoming a big thing with communities and thinking about how their communities are designed. As you can see, we have multiple disciplines that we bring to this. It's not just one. We have experienced communities of a similar size, and we've all worked together before too, which is a plus. We understand each other and how we work. And again, we want to see our plans implemented, so we want to develop realistic solutions. And it doesn't hurt that we're not that far away. You know, if we're needed, we can come at pretty much a moment's notice to address a particular issue. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad, any of us here would be glad to answer it. I know that was a lightning round, but I just wanted to do it quickly, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. I guess she did a good job explaining everything.
I guess so.
Thank you.
Or I wore you out. I don't know.
Thank you for coming, and thanks for sharing. Item eight, staff comments. We probably should consider taking that one off.
As soon as we do.
Yeah, somebody will have a comment, yeah. Item nine, approval of the minutes. And so that would be under actual 10 consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business, A. Second and final reading of ordinance number 2017-32.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22 parcel 134.07, consisting of 8.34 acres located at 500 Highway 96 North from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 medium-density residential zoning district.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I asked for this to be put back on the agenda. This was something that was before the war of consideration in the past. At that time, there was a public hearing. Some members of the public got to speak, but the developer did not. We want to give the developer an opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, and hello.
Thank you for having us here today.
Glad to have you. Okay, so do you want to just kind of give us a rundown? And if any commissioners have a question, then we can go from there?
Absolutely. My name is Dan Reynolds. I'm with Habitat for Humanity. I'm the Director of Construction. Again, thank you for, you know, having us back. And there were, we're looking to, the property that we own, 500, the address, 500 Highway 96, is currently zoned RS40. We're looking to rezone it to R20. And we were here a couple of weeks ago for the rezoning, and there were some comments from some of the citizens of Fairview. And the, you know, no motion was presented at the, at that hearing, I guess you would call it. And so we went back to, went back and thought about it and said, you know, let's address, you know, the citizens that came out and spoke. Met with the Tuckers, which was awesome. Thank you, thank you for answering the door and inviting me in twice. And they had very legitimate concerns. You know, and you didn't mention the concern you had about the trees and what trees would be taken down. And we talked about that at length, and some things that we could do to be neighborly and to keep your property so that you could walk out on your back deck and still look at trees. And, you know, it's my intention to, and we have a long way to go before we get to the development stage with site plans and landscape plans and things like that. And I really wanted to inform the Tuckers about our project and what we're doing, and because we are neighbors, and keep them in the loop as far as what we're going to do with the property boundary, what are we going to do with trees, and tell them my intentions and how I feel about the development and how we feel as an organization about the development and about being neighbors. And I fully intend to carry that out and show you the plans and show you what we're doing. And we'll be here at planning commission meetings to have the plan approved. The other major concern was where the road was going to come into the development. You know, I don't have a lot of road frontage, and there is an easement on your property. And we did have a second meeting at our surveyor's office. I haven't yet hired an engineer, and I haven't yet gone, you know, we're at the rezoning phase right now. I haven't yet gone and had a total topographical survey done. So we haven't invested that far into the project, but we did sit down and examine options for the road. There's a lot of rules that go with having a road. You know, it needs to come in at a 90-degree angle from Highway 96, things like that. And definitely want to work with you all so that we can have a road that works for you as well as that works for me. And we are opening to engineering a solution to make that happen. And I will, I'm standing here right now saying that we want to be with you, you know, the whole way through. And one of the things I wrote down, we want to be transparent in our plans and what we're going to do with you all, and also with the other neighbors. and also with the other neighbors. Right behind us, that subdivision, I guess that's to the north, Fairfield Court. There were a couple of citizens that spoke at the last Board of Commissioners meeting or a couple Board of Commissioners meetings ago. We had a, I invited every single one of the neighbors in that subdivision to a neighborhood meeting right here in Fairview at the Meeting Place Church. And we sat down with all the directors on, in the staff of our organization to talk about the development, who we are, what we do, and our procedures for doing it, and addressed the concerns that they had. One of the concerns was stormwater, and, you know, one of the neighbors says that in his subdivision, all the water ends up in his backyard when we have heavy rains like we're having right now. And he wanted to know what our plan was for the stormwater. And I'm going to have the site engineered. I'm going to have a stormwater plan in place. And, you know, told him that, again, the transparency, I will sit down and show him our stormwater plan when we have it engineered so he can see that all the stormwater will be dealt with on our site and on our property. And so he can feel comfortable about his property. With, in the neighborhood meeting, information, I think, or the lack thereof of what we are going to do, who we are, was probably the number-one cause for concern and for some of the comments that were made at the prior Board of Commissioners meeting. We want to be neighbors. We absolutely want to be part of the community. We want to be transparent, and, you know, I'm open. Every neighbor has my business card with my cell phone number on it. Please call me. I'm happy to, we are very, very passionate about what we do. And we want to be neighbors, and I want to answer your questions, and I'm happy to do so. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have today.
Okay, thank you. I just had one question. How many people do you think you actually had from that Fairfield Court subdivision show up to your meeting?
I think there's 12 homes in that subdivision. Correct? You can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you're pretty close.
Okay, and three of the homeowners came to our meeting at the Meeting Place.
Okay. Sure.
So right now, the way the zoning is, you could build eight houses now, correct?
With, well, I think we figured it out to be between six and eight because of the open space requirements and because of that left side of the property there is dicey. So between six and eight, yeah, short answer.
Hit the rezoning to R20. How many homes do you think you can put in?
Right now, like with preliminary sketches, between 12 and 14.
So this would basically mirror Fairfield Court somewhat.
Somewhat, yeah. Fairfield Court is, the zoning on that is R13. Those lots are actually higher-density lots than the zoning that we're looking for.
How many hours does a homeowner have to donate working on other projects before they become qualified to get their own home?
Sure, for partnership, we're at 250? 280 hours. It's a combination of hours, we call it sweat equity, hours put in on their own home, hours put in on other homes, community service. And then there's, we have, it's almost a year-long program where there's budget coaching, new homeownership classes, you know, as far as maintaining the home and things to do and where the shut-offs are and things like that. A number, a year's worth of classes that count toward that sweat equity as well.
And I know this is just your rezoning phase, but, you know, I'm sure anytime we get one subdivision backing up to another, and they'll probably go over a lot in the Planning Commission phase. But, you know, one of the biggest concerns is always some kind of buffer. You know, no one wants to back up to trees and then all of a sudden have, you know, a neighborhood. Do y'all have any plans?
Sure.
Go ahead.
No, thank you, Mayor Carroll, because that was a concern, and I forgot about it. And again, I haven't done all the site planning yet and things like that, but just, you know, like other developments that are going in and that we've done in the past. I want to, I definitely want to and have intentions to create a buffer in the back between Fairfield Court and our future development. I'm a tree fan, okay? So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, if I can get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a first with Commissioner Burks and a second with Vice Mayor Crutcher. And no more discussion, I assume?
I have one other question.
Okay.
The homeowners that actually came to your community meeting, what was their outlook at the end of the meeting?
I think that they were happy that we had the meeting and happy to be informed and actually be told and know what was going on and have a contact, you know, contact info for questions or follow-up or things like that, you know? I can't, you know, are they in favor of it? Are they against it? Honestly, I thought, you know, they might come in today and have, you know, I'm super, super glad that the Tuckers came in today to talk about it. I thought they would. And a number of them, I think two of the three have actually built with Habitat for Humanity. So, you know, I know that, you know, as far as our organization or what we do is concerned, they have participated in it and value it and like it. I can't speak for them as far as, you know, do they want the property rezoned, you know? I'm going to say, yeah, they do, but, you know, I can't speak for them.
I, go ahead.
Is your plan to go forward and build homes there even if you don't get the rezoning?
Honestly, I'm an optimistic thinker, so I hadn't even thought of a Plan B if we don't get the rezone. We would take it back as a team and reevaluate. And, you know, that's kind of, you know, how we work. It's, I don't know.
Well, I kind of feel like Commissioner Rainey brought up a good point when she asked, how many could you build now? How many would you build? You know, to say if we don't rezone this, and this is not my thoughts or words, I'm just giving an example. Oh, well, we don't want to have houses behind us. You still could go behind them with the six and eight. So whether or not we want a nice subdivision with all the perks and stuff, it kind of puts it in perspective to me, to citizens that might, you know, think one way versus another, that, you know, sometimes just taking in consideration of what could you do if it was zoned this and how many houses you could put on it. And then going into, if we approve this plan, you know, how many more additional houses? And it's really not that much more. It's still going to be an R20. So I kind of thought that that was a good perspective way to look at it. So that would be my, you know, only comments. I really appreciate y'all taking the time to meet with the citizens. I think that always when people show any kind of concerns, just having a face and a vision and having that one-on-one, it was huge. So I applaud y'all for taking your time and doing that.
We'll continue to do so, you know? I stand before you, you know, and say that we absolutely will continue that trend as we go through the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
I'm going to Epstein.
Okay, and Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Okay, and I'm a aye, so it passes.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us to new business, 12A, and that would be appointments to open seats. And we don't have anything. So I just encourage the citizens, if you are interested in trees and the way our community is going to look, please consider joining this board. They do a lot of, have a lot of great discussions, and so it'd give you an opportunity to just be involved in the community. 12B, ordinance number 2018-03.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 69, parcel 12, consisting of 5.35 acres located at 7506 through 7508 King Road from an AR15A agricultural zoning district to a RS40 low-density residential zoning district. Owners Daniel and Susan Greer.
And the Greers are here today?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
And I'm vote aye. Motion carries or passes? And that brings us to C, or 12C, selection of engineering firm for multimodal grant.
Yes, Mayor Carroll, members of the commission, as you're aware, we recently submitted RFQs for firms to perform the engineering work on the sidewalk project for the multimodal grant on Highway 100. We had six firms submit their proposals. I presented those in the presented form at the work session a couple of weeks ago. One of the requirements that we have is we go back and grade those to make sure that we've looked at those impartially to see where we, where they fall and grade those as a requirement that the state imposes upon us. The Administrative Committee did go back and do that. We went back and graded these individually, independently. And as we, as we, the conclusion we came to at the first review was the preferred and highest graded firm that presented to us was Civil and Environmental Consultants. So the request we have for you tonight is for the board to approve the approved move forward with an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants for the work on the multimodal project.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
And then my votes an aye.
Thank you, and as we move forward with that, we will make sure that the agreement to be signed comes back to be formally adopted by the board before it goes any further.
Okay, thank you. And 12D, amended budget, and I'm assuming that's going to be Mr. Hollis?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board, as you're aware, we're working on the amended budget. We actually have two schedules that we're working on. The first is the amended budget for this year. You'll have the amended budget for your review in consideration at the next meeting, March 15th. We have been working on this for some time. One of the things we wanted to be sure of was that our revenues, specifically our property tax, met the projections. We believe that they have. February is a large month for that, so we had some concern as we moved through the month to make sure we met those numbers. We believe we have. I will submit that amended budget to you via email. Obviously, there's no vote to be taken place on the email, but you'll see, you'll have the original budget that you had and any highlighted changes. I will tell you that the budget is in good shape. Our revenues appear to be good. Our expenditures appear to be good. And we have met all of the discussed reserves and fund allocations that we intended to meet at the beginning of the year. So cash, as we've discussed a couple of times, we're comfortable with. The budget, we're comfortable with. We do have some changes and some challenges for the coming year. We're aware of those. But right now, we're in good shape, and that's a testament to the work that's been done by the Board of Commissioners, mayor, and staff. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, city attorney, do you have anything for us tonight?
Comments?
Okay. We'll go ahead to the communications from the board. Commissioner Rainey, if you would like to start tonight?
Mayor, can I add two things just quickly? I apologize before you get in. Couple of things to be aware of. We've had a couple of calls regarding some flooding, high-water issues throughout the city. I just want you to know, we've made several visits to those locations. Some are on the southern and western part of town, some are on the northwestern part of the town. We tried to catch those when it was raining. We were out this morning about 8:15, meeting with some residents. So if you get calls about flooding or water concerns, if you'll let us know, they're typically in the same general areas. And we've had some in a subdivision out near Interstate 40 and then obviously off Chester Road. We're working on a plan to address those. That will be a rather lengthy plan, and we'll try to put a budget with that. That's not something that's going to be easily addressed. I will tell you, we have talked about adding a staff engineer as we go forward, and we think that going forward, that will certainly help us defer, if not prevent, those matters coming to us in the future. We know we have some work to do, but there are some plans being worked on to address those. So we want you to be aware of that. And as it relates to the comprehensive plan, we've talked about this for some time. There's no request that you take any action tonight. I will tell you that Commissioner Burks and I did spend about an hour on the phone with Mr. Covington a couple of weeks ago to kind of vet this process and make sure, and we were both pleased enough to go forward with that. I won't speak for Commissioner Burks, but I think he would agree that we were comfortable in that. We've also followed up with each of the references from Williamson County, Tennessee, Starkville, Mississippi, and Pike Road, Alabama, the biggest ones that they provided, and we did get positive references back from all of those. So the next step in the comprehensive plan that you'll have, and again, you don't have to make this decision tonight, but the next step would be either to move to consider common ground as the firm to choose for the work on the comprehensive plan or readvertise. That's just where we are in the process. So it's clearly the pleasure of the board. You could go either direction you wanted to, but that's kind of where we are. I know Commissioner Burks and I had that discussion at length, so that's just the process. So as you go through, just know that we're, our preference is to consider common ground. If we don't do that, we're going to have to readvertise, and that's where we are. And that's all the updates for activities I have for you tonight.
Well, you want the board to vote on that also, or they've already done, there's no vote to be taken on that?
There, it's the pleasure of the board. If there's going to be a selection of common ground, the board would need to vote on that. If there's not going to be a selection, we just need to vote to readvertise. I mean, you could do that at any meeting, whether, or any point that you choose to do those. That's just the point that we are in the process.
Can we do that now, or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
You can do it now. You'd simply just offer a resolution. We'd have to come back with a contract to approve, but you could offer a resolution to approve that firm if that's what you chose to do.
Can we add it to the, it wasn't really an agenda item, so I don't, could we add it this late? It's already been approved and...
It's a pleasure, any board member can offer anything for any resolution at any time. So there's no, you can do it however you prefer to do it. You can do it tonight or wait, but you certainly have that right as any member of the board.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve common ground to do the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey? Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
And then my votes an aye.
Thank you very much for the work you've done and that you will do. This will be in... This will be a very beneficial process for the city, so thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to Commissioner Rainey. Any communications?
Well, I want to say that there's a free tax prep service for anyone making under $66,000 a year. And the city graciously let us move into the Triangle School building this year to do that service for people who live in Fairview. And the girl who runs that program came in today and talked about how many people are coming out there who some have been to school at Triangle School, have never been back inside of the school, and how excited they are to see the inside of that school. So I think that we've actually gotten the school out so people can see it and I think it's doing more than we thought it would do. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. First, I, I have to apologize. I had a technology issue with my city-issued cellphone and did not realize that the voicemail had not been set up on that. So people that have been trying to leave me a voicemail and were unsuccessful, I apologize. I didn't find that out till tonight by accident and so it is now fixed, so we're good to go there. Also, Fairview High School has had a great couple of weeks with, in sports. I'm a football guy, so I don't know about all these things, but apparently they're doing ridiculously well in basketball. I think the finals, is anybody, correct me?
There's a game tonight.
Regional final? It's tonight, okay. I believe our wrestling team, I think we had a, a young man that won state, if I'm not mistaken. And then starting next week, the theater production of Beauty and the Beast will be going on the 8th, 9th, and 10th, if I'm not mistaken. You can get your tickets for that. And then finally, on March the 3rd, which is a Saturday, if you're a citizen here and you have a need for some, some food, Grace Works is doing a mobile food pantry at Fairview Middle School. It starts at nine and will probably go till about 11. So if you're one of those families that could use some assistance in food, come out and see them.
Thank you. Commissioner Burks?
I'd like to congratulate the young men from the PAC 309 and the Cub Scouts here in Fairview. They did their Passover ceremony where they went up into Boy Scouts and we have some real good future leaders in this community and y'all should be proud and help support them. So I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Nothing to nightmare, thank you.
Okay. And then maybe we can, once basketball's over, maybe get the team to come in and the wrestlers, maybe April meeting, we'll look at doing that. We definitely have some wonderful athletes in this community and very proud of their successes at Fairview High School. And I definitely would, I'd love to have been at the game tonight, but we, we'll just cheer them in our hearts and move forward. Also, I've, I've mentioned in prior meetings, I've had a lot of calls about the trash, the littering in our community. I know the city's trying to, you know, work on ways that's a lot easier when it's cut in season and they're out there every day, but it kind of makes you more aware of the trash once somebody's calling, or it's not even always the same person. And so I've been really watching it and it is, it is embarrassing for our community to have this much litter. And we can't say it's all the city's responsibility. I think at some point in time, sure, we can do some things to help, but I'm just asking some of these organizations in the community to, maybe we used to have clean sweep, maybe consider doing some pickups and just stop littering, you know? I don't know if it's the Fairview residents or if it's people passing through our town, but it doesn't look pretty and it is our town. And it's something that I, you know, now that I've really been watching and paying attention, I, I've never seen it this bad. And so I'm just asking the citizens, please take pride if, hopefully it's nobody that lives in our city limits and it's passer-throughs, but we need to take pride in our community and just really encourage if there's any organizations that maybe would be interested in doing a clean sweep. I know Keep Williamson Beautiful will come out and supply us. And then I know the city is looking at different ways. Maybe we, we used to have the county help out with some pickup. But anyway, I just want to keep bringing that to everybody's attention because I get calls at least once a week and get emails. So I know I'm, you know, there's a lot of people out there that are concerned about this and I want them to know I am too. So anyway, if you will pass the word and make sure that if you know, if you're part of an organization that would like to help, please contact me and we can get together with Keep Williamson Beautiful and do something. Take pride in our city, so. And I guess that's it for me tonight. So if I can get a, a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, if I can just say, per Micah Sullivan, Fairview's winning 41 to 38 at the end of the third. And on that note, I make a motion to adjourn.
Great news. Get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.